This is the Board of Trustees of the Stevens Memorial Library. Special meeting to review our budget. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law 30A 18 and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation from members of the public. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast or Verizon Channel or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance. Members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So I will call the meeting to order now at 5:02. And I'll do a roll call. I'll start with myself, Anne Kavanaugh. I'm here. Mary?
Yeah.
Bill Duffy is not here. Eva?
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Earl?
Here.
I should say last names. And then Kathleen Keenan, our director.
I'm here.
It's here. And Cindy Maza?
Here.
And Dee Casey?
Present.
Okay, there we are. Cindy, is there any public comment?
No, there is not.
Okay. Okay, then we will start. Kathleen, I assume you want to start with all of the... Well, we all got all of the documents, however, I will hand it over to you.
Okay, I don't want to read the documents because they're too long. I guess what I'd say is we'll go through one document at a time, and I'll ask if people have any observations about each document. So the first document that I started to use in the last few years are called the introductory notes, where I tried to summarize and explain the various parts of the budget process that we go through. So my question is, did anybody have any questions or any observations? And that includes typos or sentences that don't make sense in the budget introductory notes.
The only question I had, I went back and looked quickly again. I didn't notice that you had just mentioned in here about the handing out food at the library. Is that in here somewhere?
In what respect?
You know, the library was the location for people to get, pick up food?
We were for a short time at the beginning of the summer, but not very long.
Okay, so it's not in the write-up then?
It moved to the high school, isn't that right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just curious. That's all. I'm good.
Okay.
So that document, was that the one with the goals and... Or was it the one about the...
The title is...
Budget introductory notes.
Notes, yep. And I actually put a number at the front of each of these documents for sequence, just to make it easier to go, know that we're going to document one, document two, document three. Even when we're meeting in person, there are so many pieces of paper, it was challenging sometimes for us to all be in the same document at the same time. But one of the things that we've done in the past few years, the budget document format is very prescriptive because we, all the departments build the budget book. And so our documents here are intended to convey the content of what we want to do next year, but it's not the final format. When the final budget documents are ready, I will send you those, and they will be typed somewhat differently. And they definitely won't say document one, document two, document three. Collapse into a single document. But, but over the years, especially as we had new members joining the board, there was a lot to absorb about how the budget process worked at the municipal department. And so part of this has been trying to break it down into an easier way to absorb what we have to do. So some of the other documents that I sent were the memo that went to the division directors explaining that it would be a level service budget this year.
Right.
When working on that, we picked the number of 1.5% as an increase across the board for all line items. It was an easy number to pick because salaries for the professional librarians union and the clerical unions in town, their next increase by contract is 1.5%. And so rather than try to use a different number for other line items beyond salary, we said, let's do everything straight across the board at 1.5%.
Kathleen, was that based on instructions from the town manager to propose a level service budget, or was that was your decision?
That was a request from the town manager, and we received the... Each year, we receive a budget instructions memo that comes from Lynn Savage, the finance director, and in there, the request was for level service and not to be asking for increased staff, for instance. They did not give us a figure. Some years in the past, they would give us a number and say, plan for 1% or 2%. This year, they just said level service. And so level service is not level funded. We had to find some kind of number to account for a percentage of increase. We went with the salary contract number to at least have a starting point for the conversation.
Are all of our staff positions filled right now?
We have a couple of empty positions. One is the library assistant position. It's part-time, it's 19 hours a week, and we do have approval to fill it. We'll be advertising that hopefully, if not this week, then next week. And then the only position that will be empty will be our weekend custodian. And at the moment, we haven't needed the weekend custodian. So we've let that position, the position still exists. So that's the, the good news for us is the, these positions can sit empty, but the positions are still authorized. And when we need them, we're able to ask to fill them.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate as a town when it comes to staffing and what we need to do.
And then that's important because of the, well, for one reason, for a lot of reasons it's important, but for one reason, and by the way, this is Mark Rogers. That, with the OPEB charge essentially is covered by position. And so if you add a new position, we're obliged to cover that OPEB charge. If it's an existing position, we've already covered it.
Yes. And we've been very fortunate in the approach that the town adopted, I think, last, but two years ago now, about new positions that we pre-fund the, the OPEB payment. So we're going into year three of our commitment for the full-time teen librarian, so we're in very good shape to keep meeting that, that obligation.
So Kathleen, if you chose not to fill that position permanently, would you be able, is it fungible? Could you move it to a different job category and, and fill it with the appropriate authorities or sign-offs?
Nobody's probably asked that question, but that's a really good question.
Sorry, Steve. So the answer is we could, we, if we want to create a new position that's within the bargaining unit, we have to bargain that with the AFSMI group. So in creating new positions, they need to be bargained. Now, it's been my experience that no union has ever rejected adding to their membership, but it is still something that needs to go through the proper bargaining channels.
I see. So this particular position that we were talking about is in a particular union? And therefore, if we don't add a position in that union, we would need to bargain? Do we need to bargain to let go of the position in the, in the union where we don't need the position?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a two, two bargainings have to take place?
Correct. Create a non-union position. However, if the created position looks like it should be in the union, we would lose that case at the Division of Labor Relations. So it would need to be a position that would function outside of any of the duties that any of the union members are doing. So it's a dual process. You have to bargain in, bargain out.
Got it. Okay. So Dee, so this contract has the absolute number of positions in it?
It has the titles listed, so if we want to make a change to a title that's listed in the salary schedule, we have to...
Right, right, right. But it doesn't say, it doesn't say we have to have nine something or others, or 12, or...
No, we don't have minimum manning, it's called, in this contract.
Okay, so it just describes the position descriptions, I mean, the, whatever it is, the way the jobs are described, but not the, not the number of people in those positions?
Correct. Staffing level is a management right.
Correct. Okay, okay. So if we wanted to... Okay. And I assume they're all, they're all the same in that bargaining unit, is that right?
In terms of where they are graded on the salary structure, that is correct. So if you are a library assistant, you, and Denise Casey, I've been there 10 years, and Kathleen's been there one, we're in the same grade and the same salary structure. We might be different steps because of our experience, but we're the same classification on the salary schedule.
So there, but there are different job descriptions within that contract?
That is correct.
So, so if you don't want to fill one of those job descriptions, you could fill another one within the contract, is that right? So if I wanted to have a, if I didn't want to have a reference librarian, but I wanted to have something else, I could do that as long as it's in the contract?
I would say that would, something that we would need to impact bargain, because you'd be changing one of the fundamental positions in the contract.
Not the description or anything, just, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to have one of these, but I want to have one of those, but it's already in the contract.
I would, I would say yes, but I'm always more comfortable with engaging the union.
No, I understand, I understand. It's always good to ask before you do it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I get that, I get that. So, yeah, 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 okay. Okay. That makes sense.
So this is Earl. I just, I don't think we want to change what you've got in here, but it strikes me or seems to me that, given what we're going through in COVID, you know, going forward, I, I don't think we're ever getting back to normal. But, you know, the amount we're spending on electronic, I'm looking at a line item here, pardon me while I try to read it, but AV electronic materials versus all, you know, there's a listing of different kinds of purchases, I guess. Periodicals.
Wait, hold on one second. Are you looking at the spreadsheet now?
Yeah, I thought that was where we were. The one that's...
The one that Kathleen just updated and sent.
Well, I'm not sure I have the updated one, but I'm looking, the one I have, I have to put my glasses on.
Sure. So that's document number two, and Earl, let me explain something. So AV electronic materials does not cover eBooks and e-audiobooks.
Okay.
It covers the databases. So we are in fact, and so it doesn't show in this report, it's not granular enough. We are using book money to buy e-audiobooks and e, you know, so e-book electronic books and e-audiobooks. We use the periodical money to buy e-magazines, and we've been using the audiovisual money specifically towards things like databases. And part of why we do that is when we report to the Board of Library Commissioners with the ARIS report and the State Finance Report, they put together all of the book material regardless of medium. So when they want to see, how much did you spend on books? It's easier for us, reporting-wise, to say, here's what we spent for physical books, here's what we spent for e-audiobooks, here's what we spent on books on CD or books on MP3 format.
So Kathleen, if I look in the budget, to me, it looks like there, there are three lines. Periodicals, books, and AV electronic materials.
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about, those three lines?
Yes, those, those are what we refer to as the materials spending. So when we work on the State Finance Report, they ask, how much of your budget did you spend on materials? Those are the three line items that we go through into the budget.
And what is the percent we're supposed to spend of our budget?
Well, MBLC has...
What was it supposed to be?
They, they have a formula, so it's based on your population and various other aspects. You are in theory supposed to spend 100% of that requirement. However, in order to be certified, they will allow libraries to spend 90% of the formula, and in some circumstances, you can spend less than 90% of the formula and still be certified.
So in a typical year, not a COVID year, but a typical year, what would that formula tell us about the amount of money we would have to spend on a million-dollar budget?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but what I can tell you is, in the years that I've been here, Stevens every year exceeds the 100% materials requirement spending. And this budget is, the intent is to keep doing that each time.
Okay.
We've been very fortunate.
Yeah, my recollection was, you had said something like, I don't know, some number like 12% or, I don't know, you had mentioned it. Could you, could you just, after the meeting, later on, could you just look that number up and, for a typical year, not one of, not these years, right?
Yep.
What it would have been, just so we have kind of a, an idea about that?
Yep.
So Kathleen, you answered, go ahead, Kathleen.
That number is called the materials requirement.
Yeah.
So I'll go look for that. So if you see me talking about the materials requirement, that's, that relates to the question.
Okay.
So I think you answered my question. You know, I think going forward, we've got to think about ways to make it easier online to borrow books, but, you know, I understand that's in the book category. Yep, the other question I had was, I guess it's the software license line, 531-800, I guess. What, what does that include, Kathleen?
So we get a large percentage of our software other places than strictly out of software money. So all of our staff equipment, so all of our operating systems, all of our virus checking, all of the network connection software, all comes through the town IT budget, so that expense doesn't show here. We get a lot of software through the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, and that expense shows in the contract fee. So if you looked at the line that said contract, and that's where we have the MBLC fee. So this line item is actually just a few small separate things that we buy on our own. The biggest ticket item in there is the license to use the userful software. Userful is the public access software that we use to run the machines when the public come in and sit in the reference area to go to the internet to use email. So the, the biggest ticket in there is userful, and that's generally a little under 10,000. The, the other fees are for some soft software, like on our website, you'll see something called Wowberry, which runs a carousel and shows the latest books that we bought. So something like that, we might pay out of that line. So spend quite a bit on technology, but most of those numbers don't actually appear in this budget.
So like, where did, like, the subscriptions to, like, magazines and the different websites? What does that fall under?
So for subscriptions for materials that patrons use fall in those three patron categories of periodicals, books, and AV electronics.
Okay, AV electronics. What about, so how much is the MBLC fee about?
It's actually very exact. It's $42,464.
Oh, that's the whole thing.
That's the whole thing. That's our one big contract there.
I didn't know if we had some other contracts.
Does that, does that fee include any of the e-materials that they buy through the MBLC?
It does not. That's the contractual membership fee that covers everything except electronic conferences, contents. We get billed as a separate item our share of the electronic contents. So MBLC...
And where is that rolled up?
That gets put into the book budget. So again, because what we're buying there are books, it's paid out of the book line item. So this year, and, and there's basically, we call it an assessment. MBLC has a formula, so based on the size of your town and based on the number of items you actually have in your online database and catalog, and on how much circulation usage we have, they come up with an assessment both for the contract fee, which is the 42,000, and assessment for how much we should contribute to the general overdrive book fund. So this year, that number is about $6,300. So we...
That goes in books or AV electronic materials?
That would come out of the books. Now, what happens is we then actually spend more money to, so all of our overdrive material is contracted through MBLC, so we don't buy directly from overdrive. We fund MBLC, and they buy through, buy overdrive for us. So for instance, this week, we're sending an extra $6,000 to MBLC to go put it towards the electronic book fund. So that money will add more books to the pool.
When we send them money, do we get to request what we'd like them to buy with that money?
Yes, if it's additional money. As, as the assessment, it goes into the general purchasing plan. They have a set of purchasing rules on, because of course, many people can ask for, you know, them to buy this book or that book. And if you look at the total population for the 36 towns, if we bought just what a person asked for, we'd be in trouble. So there's a rubric for the general collection that should support the general needs of the 36 towns. If you contribute additional money, like this $6,000 I'm sending this week, we can specify how we would like it to be spent. So for instance, I will send this in and say, please use this $6,000 to buy additional copies of the most popular titles. So we'll bring down the wait time for people to get one of those books.
I see. Interesting. So we really, so really, they're making the, MBLC is actually making the eBook selection and purchase decisions for the consortium?
They're doing it with our assistance. So the process is that each of the 36 libraries has an overdrive reviewer. So using the general rubric of what to buy, each month, they put together a list of what they plan to buy. It comes to each of our libraries, so it comes either to me or to someone at the library, Stevens, and we agree with what they're proposing. So that way, the 36 libraries are still getting to vote on what's then picked by the rubric.
So Kathleen, if, so if you send them the $4,000 or whatever, and say, you know, I want more Gone with the Wind, does that mean that North Andover patrons have a shorter wait for Gone with the Wind? Or does it mean that everyone in general that uses MBLCC gets a, gets the book quicker?
Everyone in general. Because it's a pooled resource and because of Overdrive's software capabilities, it isn't possible for us to do very specific things. I can do special requests one-off at a time, and I've done that in the past. So for instance, when it was time for summer reading, I would send a list of, these are the books for summer reading, and I'd send the funds to buy those books as extra copies. And we would set them up so that if we had a hold list from Stevens patrons, they would get first choice on them. But once the first, once the first checkout happens, after that, the book goes into the general pool.
Do we buy books just for our patrons, or are they all through the MBLC?
It's a general pool.
All of them, okay.
But in addition to this, we still buy hard copy books, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the hard copy we buy there in our library, is that just a...
And inside of the Symphony circulation system, there is another formula, so that if a person who has a Stevens library card puts a hold on a book, if there's a Stevens book available, copy available, the Stevens person gets it first.
Yeah, I thought I remembered something like that, where we got priority.
Yeah, so that's for the physical books, but not for the electronic books.
Okay.
Does the, do Safari eBooks, is that also an overdrive, or is that separate?
Safari is separate, and Safari actually just got bought by O'Reilly, so you'll start seeing the, the links on the website will start to say, "O'Reilly Safari" as it transitions.
Now, do we pay for that separately, like the databases?
We, we do. One of the things that we do through MBLC is if there's a, like a database, like the Safari overdrive, the Safari O'Reilly books, if all of the libraries want to buy that same separate book or database, then we will purchase it as a pooled resource, which typically brings the price down for us. Because if, you know, we all bought, bought it individually, it's more expensive as a single unit. So Safari is one of the book groups that we purchase as a group through MBLC.
But that's different from Overdrive. It's a separate...
Yes, it's a separate company that does not want their books to be distributed by Overdrive. So the, the big thing for us is that whether or not the publishers want to do business through Overdrive.
Okay. Interesting. Well, I'm, you know, you know, some of us were numbers people. Would you feel comfortable giving us a little bit more detail about, you know, what's underneath those three lines? You know, where the money actually goes in a little bit more detail, like for things like Overdrive and Safari and stuff, just so we'd get some idea of the next level of detail?
We can do something like that. One of the things that we do, using the Munis Finance System, we put in purchase orders for what we're buying from each vendor, so we're actually able to come back and tell you how much we're spending for books for children, opposed to the adults. So we have something like that, we can give you an idea.
Yeah, what, please, yeah, and again, standard, standard disclaimer, don't go to any special effort to do this. If there's something that you could make available that you already are doing, that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, it seems like we have a lot of questions about these particular things that aren't necessarily impacting the budget, but it's more a learning process, I know for me. Is this something we might want to talk about at the next meeting we have, or February meeting?
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, we should move on from that, but...
Kathleen, I think what we're saying is, we don't want you to, you've got a lot to do to get the budget.
Right, right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we need to move along, right? Yes, you're right. So I have a, I have another question on a different subject, Kathleen. There are two maintenance and repair lines in the, in your budget. Can you explain what, what the difference between those two lines is?
This is the one that I look at the answer every time because the nodes are so identical. So the first thing I'll tell you is that the municipal budget, the line item numbers and the names or the descriptions on the line items comes prescribed to North Andover from the state, so we don't have any ability to make them easier for us to understand. So the difference between those two line items, one of them is for planned or known preventative maintenance costs. So for instance, in one line item, there's the annual contract to have the elevator inspected four times a year. There's the cost for having the fire alarm system tested once a year. The other line item, they're not prescribed costs, it's the contingency money. So the toilet breaks and the plumber needs to come in, he gets paid out of the contingency cost as opposed to the prescribed, prescribed...
So I'm guessing, so I'm guessing the $9,000 is, is prescribed, and the $16,000 is the, whatever it takes to fix the problem?
Yeah, let me look every, I look every year.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes complete sense. Okay. I'm good.
Other questions about things, maybe in terms of the line items?
The only other thing that would be interesting to me, and you've, you've shown us this... Um, the only other thing that would be interesting to me and you've you've shown us this before, but would be interesting to have a sort of the next level of detail on uh, the salary line because I can't, I can never quite remember. You know, the the contracts salaries versus you and Cindy, you know, who aren't contract, you know, blah, blah, blah. So it'd be helpful for me if we could see that next level of detail and you've shown us that before, but it it just helps me understand what those numbers mean. So.
Sure. So the the way the salary numbers are set up, it's full time versus part time. And so when in the full time line, it will show people who are bylawed, which will be sending me. It will also show people from the Professional Librarians Union, the Public Works Union, and from the Clerical Union because it's by how many hours a week you work, not by which union you're in.
Right. Yeah. And for both like for full time and part time, just to give us some idea of what what's involved in those in those lines. That'd be helpful.
Yep. So you can see the salary scales in the documents, in the budgets, uh, in the the contracts themselves, which are on the town website. Um, the next level of detail is to tell you what each person actually earns. And so I my question is, do you want to know what each person is?
Well, I. The the problem about looking at the contract is then I don't know, you know, the bylaw people, that would be you and Cindy. That's not in the contract. So you you would think about how to do that. And I, you know, I don't want to get into, uh, you know, some sort of HR information that we shouldn't probably be having available. But, you know, if there's some way to sort of summarize, I don't know. Just think about.
At, yeah, at one point, we we had it broken down as to like how many full time positions there were and how many? Like if we actually just a list of all the positions and.
We can do that.
And take the names out or something, you know, that'd be fine. I I don't even know who it is.
Yeah, we don't need to know the names or well, actually, I mean, we don't need the names with the salaries attached or whatever. But it'd be helpful to know how many positions there are.
And salaries associated with them, yeah.
At some point, it'd be nice to have a list of the staff and the names, not with salaries, like totally unrelated.
Yeah.
Our salary information is public record anyway, so providing with names is not is not an issue.
Okay. Um, I do have one other question about the those two, the what Stan just asked about, or was it Earl? I don't know about the the same description. And so why is there just zero on on the one below it? Let's see, what was it?
Yeah, good, good question, Anne, because.
Because you don't know, because all the other years are zero also.
I wanted to ask Stan where he got his numbers. He was talking about thousands. I don't know where you get those numbers.
Well, there's five, four, two, two, zero, zero, and then there's five, four, two, two, zero, zero dot C, which every all the columns are zero. So why is it even there?
So if you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see that there are colored columns.
Right.
So at the first two columns, uh, we do a comparison chart. So we can see what we spent in the previous two years, what we spent so far in this year, which is a six month or fifty percent spending rate. And then the last three columns are what we're prescribing or requesting for FY twenty two. So if you look at the line five, two, four, zero, zero, which is the equipment and maintenance, the first four columns are what we spent, what we got as a budget allocation and what we spent in FY nineteen and FY twenty. The next six columns, one is blue. That's the budget for this year. All of those columns in white that have zero.
Yeah.
If you look at the heading, you'll see some of those columns are where we're moving money between line items. We're required to track. So if the town allocated a thousand dollars for equipment and maintenance and we we transferred it to another line, I need to show that it came in in the allocation in one line item, but it got moved to a different line item. So.
Oh, so a big dot.
Does that help with all those zeros? I I'm.
No, I'm just confused about what the the five, four, two, two, zero, zero dot C, which also says materials and supplies, like all of those are zero.
I can confirm this with the Finance Director, but I believe because of municipal counting and auditing practices, you just can't delete a line item that you've dedicated. You have to save it historically. But I can check that with Lynn. I think it has to do with municipal finance law, quite frankly.
I know I.
And historical tracking.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, Dee. And I think, for example, in our, in this budget, you can see the water charge line item is zero because that was taken out some time ago and made a shared service. So but they can't just delete that line, you know.
Oh, so maybe like it was an old way of doing it because I mean.
Correct.
So what does the dot C mean?
I don't see where you see dot C. I'm trying to find the page that you're on, Anne, so I can answer your question.
Looking at the big budget spreadsheet.
What's the number? What's?
The new one you sent.
The version two. It's page two, Kathleen, or your your second report. And it is just above the materials budgets, line items. So if you go from periodicals up, it's about four line items up from periodicals.
It's five. My print is as small as yours. So take.
I blew mine up on my computer screen.
Yeah, it's five, four, two, two hundred. And there's one, there's two of them, and one has a dot C. It looks like there's more to it. Maybe cut off dot CO or D dot C something.
And it's. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. And again, I think that's, I think that's to distinct between the budget that has the zero in it and the new line item. So again, you have to have historical documentation. So you could call it dot A dot. I don't know why it's called dot C. But again, we can clarify that with the Finance Director.
So Dee, does that imply that we're going to be looking at gas leak emergency cost in perpetuity?
I hope not.
I don't know how many years it takes for that to roll off. It might take a while.
So that was just an old way that we did things and the other ones, the new way that we do it?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, something like that. I think that's.
All right. Okay, I'll let it go. Move on. Do we want to go to a new document now or is this?
Uh, yeah, I I don't have any more questions on the budget itself.
Okay. So the other document that we always, and I say we, I mean Cindy, because she really does a lot of the legwork for me, is that we have to put in what's called the budget narrative. And the most important part of that is what we're saying are going to be the goals for the department for the coming year. So the goals here are what Cindy and I have come up with and we're working, you know, with the staff, trying to be realistic with what additional things we can accomplish when we're not adding any staff or any more hours to the existing staff positions. And one of the things that's changing for us is that uh, when I first came to North Andover, your department goals were your department goals, and they didn't have anything to do with the rest of the town. And over the last few years, one of the ways that the town has has grown organizationally is that we look at our department goals now in the context of the town's goals, and those towns' goals are set by the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. So one of the documents I sent you as side reading was the the budget policy statement for the coming year. So many of the things that are in that budget policy statement, if you looked at the goals for the Board of Selectmen, we don't relate to many of them directly. But there are a few areas where we can directly relate. And one of those, for instance, is supporting the the work on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee Commission. So you'll you'll see how or why we picked out those things. And the first one is the most obvious, which is what can we do to really increase the digital and the online resources? All of these things, remember, are talking about what's going to happen on July first, twenty twenty one. So there are in fact, many things we're going to keep doing for the next six months, well before July first. So you won't necessarily see some things reflected in here that then and obviously, we're going to try to keep increasing digital a lot, resources a lot more between now and June. But then to keep that momentum up in the coming year. So please take a read of those. And if you have any questions individually about them or any suggestions, you can email those to me. The final document isn't due until Friday, January fifteenth. So if you had any suggestions or questions on individual things, if you send them to me uh, between now and then, I will work on them in the documents and get back to you.
Kathleen, in your read of the statement of the budget policy statement, it sounds like that the the intersection between the budget policy statement and the library are complementary. Um, is is there anything that isn't complementary that some that would be a challenge for us?
Um, not this year that I know of. I mean, we we tried to be very realistic. One of the things that um, we've been getting training on through the town is something called SMART goals. So that it's specific, it's measurable, attainable.
Time bound.
Time bound, things like that. So many of you may have heard of SMART goals. So part of this is a real growth process for um, not just the town employees, but for the town departments that we're looking at our goals very differently. Um, Andrew Mailer really was the one who started us on this process. And he's like, a budget goal should have something to do with how you're going to spend your money in the coming year. Because honestly, when I first came, we had budget, we had goals in the budget statement. They didn't really have any. It didn't need to be in the budget statement because they weren't about what we were doing with the funds. So this is an area where we've really changed a lot and hopefully for the better. Um, makes us have a better handle on how we're using the money and planning to use the money.
Now, if we can just get a parking goal.
Yeah.
Out of the Board of Selectmen will be a will be a good day.
The, Kathleen, the only thing I can, I would, I I could think that you might want to think about is under the grow growing digital and remote services to actually have a sub bullet that would say, you know, you know, add more, uh, you know, digital resources, i.e. ebooks, whatever. I mean, you know, you've talked about different things like I, when I, when you say digital resource, I assume you mean like a database or something, not not a an ebook. So that's the only thing I could think is that, you know, just sort of explicitly say, we might want to actually buy more digital resources like ebooks and audiobooks and stuff uh, to make them available to patrons if we think this is going to keep going, that we're going to keep doing what we're now doing. So that would be useful for patrons. That's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, that one of the things that all the librarians are struggling with is do we call them digital? Do we call them electronic? Do we call them online? Um, and it probably at this stage is better to use more adjectives so people get the intent than to use fewer.
Yep, 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 yep. So.
I apologize. I have to jump off for personal reasons in about two minutes. So does anyone have any general questions that they might want to ask moi before I depart?
Let's see.
This is the, I mean, this is Anne.
Hey, Anne.
The town, I mean, are they pretty? Do you, does the town foresee like major problems coming up because of COVID? Like as far as revenues or are we still in okay shape?
So twenty twenty two fiscal twenty two is going to be a very challenging year, which is why we came in at a one and a half percent salary increase or overall budget increase, which includes the contractual salaries that we've already contracted with with our unions. We are seeing the effects of COVID in things like passports, which you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't think, but the town got over thirty thousand dollars in passport revenue. Meals taxes down. Um, so we are seeing excise tax. So we're seeing some not, you know, I don't want to scare anyone, but we are seeing indicators that twenty one is going to be a difficult year. Um, so we've started the dialogue with departments, which is why we asked that no new staffing be put forward. Uh, that if there's a request to increase a program in one area, that there's something to offset it in another area. Um, I think I've said this to you guys before, but I'll say it again, you know, one of the things I have never had to do in twenty three years is lay people off. And I've watched communities around us and heard from my colleagues around the state that have had to do that during COVID, and we did not. So the Town Manager and myself are trying to be as conservative as possible so that we can get through twenty two. Now, a lot of people are saying, well, what about Amazon? What about these housing developments?
Don't count your chickens before they're hatched.
Thank you, Mark Rogers. Amen to that. So the Amazon permitting revenues will come in, but it will be in twenty one, which is our current fiscal year. The realization of the tax revenue isn't going to come in until probably starting in twenty three. So twenty two is kind of like our gap year, if you will, when it comes to these large revenues that are coming in. And one of the things that I learned in graduate school budgeting one oh one, you don't want to use one time revenues like permit fees to fund operating budget items like salaries and programs. So a lot of people are pushing back and saying, well, I thought the Amazon fees were going to be like five million dollars. Well, that's correct. But if we dump that into salaries, guess what? Next year, we're not getting another five million dollars from Amazon. So we have created ourselves a structural deficit is what it's called in municipal finance. So the good news is is that five million dollars will flow to free cash, which we can then put in our piggy bank, so to speak, for future anticipation of any needs we might have. So.
It could also be used for one time expenses, right?
Exactly.
For example.
So capital, yes, exactly.
And other things.
That's what you want to use it for is a one time purchase.
Like a new parking lot.
Like a new parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Parking garage, right? But that's exactly, that's exactly how you would, how you would phrase it, is that you don't want to use it on something that you're going to need year after year because it's not coming back. The tax revenue, that will be built into the base budget, but that's a couple of years out. So I appreciate that everyone's saying, well, we've got these developments coming on, you know, we've got this agreement with Amazon. But it's for specific things. And again, we really need to take a step back and say, whatever we build into the base budget, we own forever. And salaries is seventy five to eighty percent of what we do, right? So we don't want to ever have to be in a situation where we can't meet our contractual obligations and need to lay people. Right?
Logical.
From the, Dee, from what's been going on so far, how does it seem like the other departments are responding to um, the sort of the budget approach, like the one point five percent? Are other departments struggling to try to make it work or what?
We have not started to conduct our budget meetings yet, but I can guarantee you if a department comes in over one and a half, Lynn and Melissa and I, when we sit down with that department, we'll be looking at ways to get them to one and a half.
Actually. Dee, another question about one time revenues. Would it be with the with the okay of the the Finance Committee and the and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager? Would it be okay to spend one time revenues on OPEB? So let's call them our own self imposed surcharges, which are, we believe are one time, right?
That could, that could be a recommendation. Yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanted to understand how, because it's. Oh, so we could pay off our mortgage early.
Basically, what was.
We could increase the amount of allocation that we put to OPEB for fiscal year twenty two. Yes.
More specifically, Dee, you know, we've all taken on sort of a time payment plan for new positions, right? And if we we could use some of that money to pay off that that time payment requirement that we've given ourselves and be done with it.
Right.
The difference for the new, I'm sorry, the difference for the new positions, though, is that we we put the onus back on the departments because we want departments to be very, like the library was, very cognizant and very careful in their planning for new positions. Because don't forget, it's not only the OPEB, it's pension, it's health insurance. It's all of those other things that actively we need to pay for. So while, yes, we could probably go in and pay off even the school department's OPEB obligation, we feel it's important to for the departments to have, for lack of a better term, skin in the game when they want to propose a new position so that we're not constantly putting in new positions that are then creating the backlash of what we wanted to do, which Mark was on that committee, which is try to minimize our OPEB ongoing, right? Or ongoing liability, but lessen the curve and by adding, not adding more.
Yeah, I I agree with that actually, because it also puts, it it puts the charge in proportion to who's using it.
Correct.
Whereas my little idea there doesn't.
Right. The people using the resource are paying for the resource.
That's right.
Yeah.
So for Mark, like one thing that I would say is maybe a pension, an advanced pension payment, that might be a more, you know, a better place to make the recommendation because that covers everybody, right?
Right. Right.
Or something of that nature. But no, it's, it's an excellent point. Okay, I apologize.
Thanks, Steve. I know you need to go.
If anyone has any questions, please feel free to either let Kathleen or Cindy know or email me.
Okay. Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
We, we are very fortunate to have Dee in the meetings with us because she can answer a lot of questions that I have some knowledge of, but not enough necessarily.
Enough town meetings to know that, not town meetings, but committee meetings to know that you can spin and spin and spin until you get someone who has the answers. Dan used to do that for us when we were in the finance committee. He would come in and he would actually have answers for us instead of us speculating. So it's great.
It's very helpful. So the next documents to look at, document number three is the library special revenue. So one of the things that Andrew Mailer started, that wasn't here when I first happened, he required all departments to bring forward all the money from all the places they were getting money. He didn't want to look at a library, a department's budget based on just what the municipal resources were, but who else is giving you money, how much, and what are you going to do with it? So we have the special charts that in the final document, they will all collapse into a probably a single page in very tiny print. But I bring them out individually so we can look at them. So there are two things about these. Some of these monies are actually held inside the town's finance system, the munis finance system. And then some of the money is not in the town finance system, like the money that comes from the friends and the money that comes from the trustees. So the first page looks at the money that gets held inside the town munis finance system. One is the state aid to public libraries, the cash award we get from the Board of Library Commissioners. And the other is money that people donate to us primarily to buy memorial books or, you know, a book that honors somebody who's alive. So in the past few years, we've been having a really wonderful cash influx from the Board of Library Commissioners, which actually comes from the Massachusetts State Budget. It comes from the line items, which is supporting public libraries and public library service. Because things have been so strange this past year and I wasn't sure what we might expect on this line in particular, I've said, I'm not planning to get any money from the state this year. The good news however, is that I, I wrote earlier this week to the Mary Rose Quinn, who sits at the Board of Library Commissioners, and she said that when the state voted its budget in December, that the budget includes some cash awards for the libraries. Now, it's one thing to vote, it's another thing if the revenue actually shows up in the tax coffers for the Massachusetts departments, the revenue department. So I'm still being very conservative. I've been squirreling away the cash that we received from the state aid to public libraries for several years. Andrew Mailer frequently said, why don't you spend it down? And I was like, it's my rainy day money. There will be a time when there'll be things that we need or want that we just can't cover because times are maybe not quite as good as they are. And so we actually have some decent amount of funds there to get us through the rest of this year and money to help us with some things for next year. So assuming the revenue gets collected by this in the Massachusetts, we will actually see more state aid to public libraries come into our budget before June 30th. But if it doesn't, we'll be okay.
I, you know, the only, my only comment about that Kathleen, and it's this report and the other report that you put together that gives the next level of detail on the state aid spending is that I, I hope that we wouldn't be accused of trying to hide money by allocating it to contingencies for which there's a good likelihood that we'll get the money from another source and won't have to use the state aid money. So you've set aside a little over 36,000 from the money that you have available for contingencies. But it's highly likely that the money will be forthcoming, like for example, from us, from the trustees, you know. We're going to have money, we're going to give you the money. And so it's very likely that you won't have to spend the money, the state aid money. So I just hope that, that, you know, somebody looking in from the outside doesn't think we're trying to hide money and make it look like we don't have any money. And I understand your conservative view on this. I'm just, just, it's kind of a trade-off, you know, it's like. If people looked at that, if I looked at that sort of as a taxpayer, I might say, wait a minute, you have another, you know, you have $36,000 that you say you're going to spend, but it's not really clear that's actually going to happen or what. So that's all I would say about this.
There's certainly no attempt to hide it. And prior to Andrew Mailer, that's probably a statement that somebody could make and challenge because this money was not being disclosed generally in the budget process. So it may be that my documents need more explanation so they stand alone for somebody to read them. But I, I think if people look at them and hopefully they'd have questions, they'd say, well, what does that mean? So we're actually showing much more information about the money that we receive from other sources than we have in the past.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree. But if you look at the, your so-called report number four, right? And there, in the detail, it certainly shows funds that at least, there's at least $10,000 which for sure will show up from us, right? So there's, there would, I would argue that there might need to be no contingency for that $10,000 because you know, we're good for the money. The friends, you know, we could debate that, but this would be an area where we could have a discussion. We, the trustees, could have a discussion about, do we want to be in a position to help cover these shortfalls if they occur from our funds rather than state aid funds to, so that you don't have to deplete your state aid reserves too significantly. Just something we can talk about. It's not a big deal.
And that's a good point, and we certainly would like to do that because I'm cautious. I, I, you know.
I understand.
I do that. But one of the things that this ties back in terms to the trustees' funds is in the past, we, we would purchase something, I'd ask for money, and we did not tie back that, the amount of money that we spent to how the donor wanted the money to be spent. So we kind of have a black hole here right now that we need still to fill in, which said, this amount of money is available this year to be spent for this purpose. And with those formulas in place, and honestly, because the trustees have managed their funds so well, we're in very good shape.
Yes. Well, and, and you know, that's, you know, that's the exercise that, that, you know, we went through that, you know, we, we all did a lot of that work. You know, splitting the money up into different kinds, but there was certainly sufficient funds available sort of undesigned, not books, not staff betterment that would cover at least this level if we needed to. So, you know, I, I think we're, points well taken, you know, we don't have just a giant bag of money. We don't have a bag filled with $87,000 worth of money. I get that. But I think there's, you know, I think that's something we can be thinking about as trustees. And maybe this would lead us to having our own budget, if you will, the trustees that, that parallels your budget, that, you know, would be in anticipation of maybe having to help you cover some of these expenses. You know, maybe that's something we can be thinking about in parallel with what you're doing. You know, it doesn't, we can do it on a different schedule, but, you know, maybe that's something we can think about. And, you know, if we, if we, if we thought about covering at least those three lines, which is like 36,000, we can say, okay, is that something we want to do? And how would we do that? And, you know, think that through. So anyway.
I, I would be happy to have that kind of budget process in place and to work with you to do that. These documents kind of fill the gap for information that we, because we haven't done this before. And one of the things you'll hear me say, both about the town and about the library and the Board of Trustees, is that we've grown a lot organizationally that, and I use the analogy, you know, for a long time, it was kind of like the mom and pop grocery store. And now we're part of a bigger organization and we need to be a bit more sophisticated in what we're doing. And, you know, Earl's a really excellent example. Here, the reporting for the treasure is the most, and I'm going to use the word sophisticated that we've ever had. So that's part of the growth resume, or maybe maturity is another term to use instead of sophistication. This is an area where we're ready to grow. Maybe this is the.
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, because, you know, we, we have an opportunity to help support you, particularly if there's things we can be helping you. Fun like, if we want to spend books on ebooks, you know, we have books, we have money we can spend on books. You know, we're supposed to spend money on books. So let's.
Back to the whole, you know, endowment spending budget, which
Right.
is part of our thing that we were going to work on. So.
Right, right. We need to do that.
Yep. So maybe in the future that, that budget can be included in this. I mean, it is a little bit with library trustees, you know, some of the things, but we, I think that we need to get into that probably more. And I think we were also just really thrown off track. We were going to buy some furniture and all of that stuff.
And that's what, I was going to mention that, that, you know, Kathleen often says those funds can be used for some of these building related items that we would like to do.
Right, 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 right.
You know, that's, that's
Which
source for us.
Yeah.
When we open back up, we're really are going to want to get on that, especially.
We were also going to talk about funding tracking devices for how many people were going to enter the library, which would have been wasted this year. But the point still is really on the web, we really want metrics on, on traffic, right? On all distribution mechanisms that we have at our disposal. So we could easily pivot that discussion in the light of a, of a budget, of a trustee's budget discussion with, with around, around other mechanisms that track demand. Because organic demand is what we need to measure so that we can supply.
And that'll tie into our reopening, the long-range planning and that we need to have a new plan that we're going to work on soon and the building study.
Right.
And can I just mention to you that, that I've seen a really cool tracking system that you can actually use tracking systems on seats, actual seats, to see how much they are being used. So we can see physically within the library, which areas are having the most use.
How, how does that work Eva?
It's, it's something that the furniture, like Herman Miller has come out with. And yeah, there's a sensor that tracks how long somebody's sitting there. And yeah, really interesting.
Interesting.
How much you weigh.
My thought exactly, Anne.
Not exactly, but.
Temperature. Alarm goes off if it goes above.
Yeah, whether they squirm a lot. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's, you know, that's an interesting metric that we might want to consider because, you know, one thing, it's one thing to track how many people come in. But, but you know, how much time they're spending in a particular area. And so, but we can talk about that in the future. It's nice to have, not a, not a requirement.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Okay. So anything else, any other observation about the documents that, and the budget stuff that Kathleen? I think it's pretty comprehensive.
I, I just have one more, one more question. In your, your document number five, you had the, the public copier costs. And are those, I'm, I'm just not, I have been assuming that the public copier is like a revolving fund. So we get money. The, the patrons pay money to make copies and that money that we receive for the copies on an annual basis balances these charges.
It should. And, and right, well, of course, right now with hardly anybody in the building, that's a, a different. But in normal times, we are in fact making a bit of money.
And that, and that covers the, the, the lease and the supplies. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, okay, so it is a revolving fund then. I, that's what I assume. A revolving fund to me means that you have an activity that pays for itself. That, that's kind of my rough definition of what a revolving fund is. So. Okay. And I, and I assume, I assume we can set the cost for copies to make sure it pays for itself, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm good. That's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions about any of the documents?
No.
Kathleen, when will you meet with the, will you meet with the town about the budget?
Probably after she submits, right?
Yeah. I do have a question.
Don't come back to the, to the schedule, Anne. Okay. What's your question, Earl?
On, on the budget for the trustee funds mainly, what was the painting building project? It's line item five on that sheet.
It's, which sheet is that? Number four or number five?
Yeah, I guess it's five. Yeah.
Line five, building projects?
Yeah, painting.
$10,000.
Yeah. I mean, I know we've talked about the furniture project. I'm just trying to recall what the building project painting was.
So each year, we've been trying to spruce up different parts of the building and we usually get aside some money that will be covered that can be used for that. So for instance, in this current year, we've repainted the vestibule and the lower lobby. We've repainted the teen room. We're probably going to paint a few more spaces in the building while we're closed. It's a pretty good time to be painting because we don't have a lot of people. And some years we don't spend that amount of money, but again, this is more just to remind us that this is where we might want to be using the money.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you. By the way, I, I will comment, the teen room came out great.
Doesn't it look good?
It does.
So speaking of the teen room, Will, is the, is the, is the library going to reopen for appointments? Or is it open for appointments? Or did you stop those?
Well, all town buildings were unoccupied. So not just the library, all town buildings were unoccupied. Starting from the snowstorm, which is what was that, like the 21st or something or other? 18, 17. So because of the town manager's approach for health and safety for employees, tomorrow is the first day that the buildings will start to be occupied. And they'll be occupied by the people who have passed the COVID test, meaning they had a negative test result. So our expectation is tomorrow, we will start having some staff in the building. Because we couldn't predict, everybody will have passed successfully. We did not plan a full schedule for this week. Our hope is that starting next week on the 11th, we will be back to, so we're going to ease into it. So towards the end of this week, we'll start up curbside. Next week on the 11th, assuming things are looking good for the community and the state, we will go back to the governor's standard, which is 25% of occupancy of the building. So we could have some patrons in. So a, a lot of this is really pretty flexible. And that's why we've said to people, the best thing to do is to, on the website to look at, there's a page called the latest reopening news. So as things come and go, or as we're changing what's available for services, we're trying to keep that page up to date so people can check. So hopefully by the end of this week, the calendar for making appointments to come into the building will reappear on that page. The, the beauty of the website is some of these pages exist in a shadow state where you put them in as a draft. And when we're ready, we turn the page back on again. So right now, for instance, because I can't absolutely guarantee people will be in the building next Monday, the 11th, we don't want to have them make appointments because if something changes, then we have all the work to cancel the appointments. So some of these things, it's, we're announcing it much closer to the time that we really believe it's going to happen. So curbside, we know, serves the most people. So curbside, we know, serves the most people, and of course, is one of the safest ways for the library staff to operate. So curbside always comes back first, and if we can, we'll increase those hours over time and then ease patrons coming back into the building.
When will you know when, that, when your staffing levels are, what your staffing levels are? When do you get the test results?
We've gotten them from most of the staff as of this afternoon. We have a few more people, including me, my results, well, I haven't been in the, my email to see if my results are there, but the, the goal was that everybody would have test results between 24 and 36 to 48 hours. Then that's why we just, you know, took the week to say this week is a transition week, and, and next week, we're expecting, you know, everybody's back because everybody's healthy.
It's good to do that, to do the testing, especially after the holidays and all of that.
So back to your question about the schedules, we don't have a schedule yet from the town manager. In years past, we would get, you know, invitations to meet with various people or committees, and that has changed a little bit over the years. What I would expect is that there will be at least one meeting where I present to the town manager, the deputy town manager, in this case Dee, who will probably could answer the questions without me there, and Lynn Savage. And the question becomes is, if, after that, if the finance committee for some reason would want to meet with us. We haven't met with the finance committee necessarily every year. They've been happy with what came in with the budget and didn't have any additional questions.
Do you, Kathleen, do you think there's any possibility that either Ann or I or both of us as the trustee officers could be part of that process, or what do you think?
That's, it's very interesting. When Mark Reese was the town manager, the board members, you know, the chair was typically invited. Andrew Mailer uninvited all of the board member people, I believe.
I remember that, yeah.
Yes, so with Melissa, that can be one of the questions I can ask her. And this past year, we did not have board members there, it was just the departments. But we can always ask, and they.
Yeah, we're asking.
Yeah, Melissa and Dee have been much more open to a lot of these kinds of questions than perhaps the previous town managers, so.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, I think the difference in our participation trustees is the fact that we actually have resources we can help with. So, you know, that might be part of that discussion with the town manager and the deputy town manager is, you know, how can we best use our resources to help the town, blah, blah, blah? And, you know, then, or not, you know, it's okay. But, but I, I think you might, I think it might be helpful if you asked the town manager that question, you know, should we or could we participate in some discussion, right? So, anyway.
Well, one of the things I can remember Andrew saying was that the discussion was about the municipal funds, and that was why it didn't require anybody there except the library director, because it was just the municipal funds. And I think our approach for our department is very different. We don't limit our looking at the coming year, just what the municipal has. It's like you said, we're looking at the other resources.
Yeah, yeah, but, but just to show you, he liked to have it both ways. On the one hand, he said, no, no, we're just talking about municipal funds. On the other hand, he demanded that you tell him where all your money was.
Well, yes, there was, there was a paradox there, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, yeah, he liked to know where all the money was, but he only wanted to let people talk about some of the money some of the time, right? It was kind of a control thing, I think.
All right, well, I just wanted to bring up also the fact about Charlie Salisbury passing away, which is very sad. And I know, Mark, I think you shared a story. I know a lot of people knew him, and he was town moderator for, I don't know how many years.
Twenty-five? Twenty-three, I think, twenty-three, I think, or some number like that, 21 or 23.
He was an institution in this town.
He was.
Absolutely. He was a good friend to my family. He and Martha were good friends with my parents. Yeah.
Was, was, were you ever a library trustee?
Martha was a trustee for many years.
Yeah.
Martha was.
Yes, that's right. She was also in the garden club. And I, Earl, didn't you, you and Stan found all her, was it her stuff, the, the garden club booklets and everything, where you go through all the trustees?
So that belonged to her, huh? Yeah.
Well, and Ann was the one who took Martha's seat when Martha left the board.
That's right. Should have known that, yes.
Yeah.
Should, should we think about doing anything as trustees, given that Martha was sort of part of our world?
That's a good point.
Thing to do.
Yeah.
Card, flowers, I don't know.
So her, their son Hunt still lives in North Andover. Margo lives out in Washington State. But I can get, you know, well, Brad Wakeman is family, so I've been in touch with Wakeman, but I.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you could ask, if there's something that, that we could contribute to, if they're going to have places to send contributions, maybe the trustees could send a contribution to some charity.
Yeah, that's a good idea. How is Brad family?
Brad?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I, I talked to his sister Tracy. I didn't talk with Brad. I was going to call him later this week, but.
But how are they related to Charlie?
Oh, cousins?
Yeah, cousins, I think, yeah.
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, Hunt lives, there's an apartment at Brad's house, behind his house, that's where Hunt and his wife live, so.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll.
Remember him, Ann. Hunt was a year older than us in school.
I don't remember, well, no, but.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So what I recommend is that we have the next board, the regular monthly meeting on January 26th. So if we get the information by then, that in that meeting, you could vote on what to do.
Okay.
Yep. I will be talking to Brad later this week, so.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
We'll plan on that. So is there any, so any other questions or anything about the budget from anyone?
I'm good.
Okay. And can we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, the motion, I need a motion to say that you support the budget as.
Make a motion that we support the budget as proposed.
Okay, everyone, oh, we have to do a roll call. So Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Earl?
Yes.
Eva?
Yeah.
Okay, and I vote yes.
Now I move to adjourn.
Okay. Okay, we have to do a roll call again. Okay, I vote yes, that's Ann. Stan?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Eva?
Yeah.
Okay, meeting adjourned.